Welcome to this meeting of Dundee City Council's scrutiny committee, which is being held remotely in terms of section forty-three of the Local Governance in Scotland Act 2003. All members in attendance are able to fully participate in the meeting, which is being recorded. Should any member need to leave the meeting for any reason, can they please use the chat to advise of this? If a member loses their connection, they should make every effort to rejoin the meeting. But if this is not possible, the committee services officer will note their absence for the remainder of the meeting. If you have to leave the meeting due to a declaration of interest, you must remain out of the meeting until invited back in. Would all members please mute their microphones when not speaking to avoid background noise and turn off any smart speakers? Please start the meeting with your camera on. Your face will appear on the screen when you are speaking. If your connection is poor, you may wish to turn off your camera and see if this improves matters. If this doesn't help, you may wish to quickly leave the meeting and rejoin. If you wish to raise a point of order, ask a question, speak on any item or move a motion or amendment, please use the chat when the relevant item is called. The convener will then invite you to speak. Would members of the press and public please not post messages in the chat? Where items are for noting or where there has been no disagreement expressed, the convener will call for any member who has a contrary view to indicate this through the chat, otherwise the item will be agreed. Please would members not use the chat for any other purposes, as those joining the meeting by telephone cannot see the chat and therefore will not be able to follow the debate. Although we are operating in a different way, this is still a formal meeting of the committee and the required standards of behaviour and discussion are the same as in a face-to-face meeting. Standing orders will apply to the proceedings and the terms of the councillor's code of conduct will also apply in the normal way. Does any member have any queries regarding this procedure? There are no queries, convener, so I'll now ask the committee services officer to take a roll call for the minute. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, thank you very much. As indicated, I will now take a roll call for the minute and I would ask if members would confirm their presence when I call their name. Bailey Keenan.
Present.
And received apologies from Bailey Wright and councillor Crookshank, I believe is kindly attending as her substitute, councillor Crookshank, present.
Present.
We thank you. Bailey McPherson.
Present.
And I've received apologies from Bailey Scott for this meeting. Deputy Lord Provost Cordell.
Present.
We thank you. Bailey Roberts.
Good afternoon, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. And I've received apologies from councillor Ilnacola and I believe that councillor Rome is kindly attending as her substitute, councillor Rome, present.
Good afternoon, Willie, yes, present.
Yeah, thank you very much. And finally, I've received apologies from councillor Short and councillor Anderson, I believe is kindly attending as her substitute, councillor Anderson, present.
Thank you, yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you very much. That concludes the roll call. That now takes us on to declarations of interest. Now, is there not any members of a declaration to make to the content of the agenda as it stands? Yeah, thank you very much. And there being no declarations, then that takes you on to item two, which is a summary of external care inspection and inspection reports for local authority nurseries, May to February 2024. You're asking your recommendations.
Bill, perhaps ask Mrs May to make a comment to start with. I think these are excellent reports and rather than having the staff down here to ask them anything about how good their reports are, we probably should have had a reception for them to congratulate them on such cracking results. But I'll hand over to Mrs May.
Okay, thank you, convener. And you probably said most of what I would want to say myself. Hopefully that committee today see this as a really positive report as introduced, reflecting the time period we have agreed now to bring that summary of care inspections of our nurseries in the council. So it represents ten in different establishments, some standalone and some nursery classes. And as you said, a very, very positive report with, you know, no requirements at all in one area of all of these establishments for improvement. And actually, in some of the individual establishments, absolutely no recommendations at all in four of them there. So that makes sure of all goods and very goods, with the vast majority being very good. And as you say, we've got the head of education and Paul and Lesley are an early years manager in the room there. And we've got some of our early years head teachers on the call as well and head teachers of schools where we've got a nursery class. So an opportunity to speak to them directly, convener. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. I'll start with Bailey McPherson. He's looking to make a comment.
Thanks indeed, convener, and thanks to Audrey for her introduction. I have to say, I've been on the scrutiny committee since its inception. I cannot remember when ten reports have come together, or reports on ten establishments where absolutely everything is majority five and minority four, if you know what I mean. It's absolutely superb results and I normally have a few questions lined up, but I'll be quite honest and say I don't because there's very little to ask when the feedback from inspectors is just so positive. As I understand it, there are head teacher centre managers from Wallaston, Coldside and Fort Hill nurseries, plus the Dunfield Early Years Centre along this afternoon. And I hope that they will take away from this the real appreciation of the members of the scrutiny committee to the hard work that's going in in these nursery and early years establishments. We appreciate everything that is done for the young people who attend and the high quality of education that they are receiving. And I do hope you'll take that back to your teams back in the nurseries and early year centres and to your colleagues in those that are covered in the reports that they aren't actually here today. But all I can say is frankly, very well done and keep up the good work. Thanks very much, convener.
Okay, councillor Cordell.
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, it goes without saying that it's a fantastic report. It's wonderful to see. And in an age where bad news seems to get so many headlines, I hope this one finds its way out there and the good news that your people are doing, Audrey, can be wider disseminated. When my own children went to Fort Hill Nursery many moons ago, a far more innocent time, I have to say. And my experience was always, you know, that it was a fantastic play run facility and I'm glad to see that is still the case. And, you know, Banhill as well in my own ward, it's really good to see. You know, I hope maybe the Chair would consider maybe putting together a letter from the scrutiny committee to send to your department and that's for that wider dissemination, Audrey, just to show our appreciation of the work and how much we think of the work that's good this report is. So that's my comments and maybe for consideration for yourself, Chair. Thank you.
Sorry, councillor Cordell, I have no problem in doing that on behalf of the scrutiny committee. Normally, what we've done is made sure that the messages got sent back when there has been good reports. Hasn't all been bad news in the time that Bailey McPherson and myself have been on the scrutiny committee. But we've made sure that when it has been good news, and this is particularly good, that that message has went out. And I suppose for maybe it's more important to do a letter this time, given that we did try to limit the amount of frontline staff that were out of our schools or nurseries, knowing that would just be doing their singing their praises anyway, so they're not there to listen to it. So it would probably be appropriate to write that letter, which we'll make sure it happens. But I suppose for Lesley and Paul and the team that are sitting there, obviously, you've heard the congratulations if you could make sure that the word goes back to the staff that are not here. People are really pleased with that. I suppose it's where they will go now because we're obviously, as a scrutiny committee, continually looking for continuous improvement, as I'm sure in education, everyone is. So thanks very much for that report. Is this report agreed? Okay, Willie, we'll move on to the next report.
Okay, thank you very much. Could be your item three then, HMI inspection of Downfield Primary School. You're asking your recommendations and I could advise that Karen Emmett, the head teacher, is also present this afternoon.
Mrs May, you looking to say a few words on this one?
Yeah, yeah. So this is a full inspection. We've distinguished for our committee in the past that sometimes we have a short model inspection, but this is a full inspection where all four QIs have been investigated and evaluated with three satisfactors and one good. And so there's some areas for improvement here, but overall, it reads with some really important strengths. It's good to see, if you don't mind the pun, that the good evaluation is for three point one, the QI that looks at the wellbeing and equity and inclusion of our children, which is really important for us here in Dundee. And then amongst the strengths, you will see that highlighted around the description of a caring and welcoming environment, a calm ethos, nurture and inclusion being highlighted again as strengths. And also the children themselves being described as strengths, which is always reassuring for us to see the children being motivated and their learning appearing in an inspection report. Obviously, there's with some of these valuations, areas for improvement. Scrutiny wouldn't be scrutiny without areas for improvement. And again, interesting to see that the first two are about continuing, which means the school has got a good evaluation and handle on itself where it is, so it's already begun this work. So continue there and look at the curriculum in partnership and just a wee bit strengthening around monitoring change and improving pace around that change. So, you know, all in all, a good report with satisfactory and good evaluations. And as always, the school's improvement plan will reflect those areas for improvement going forward. And as you say, Karen, the head teacher's here today as well, if you have further questions. Thank you, convener.
Okay, thanks for that. Well, I notice Bailey McPherson coming in for a question.
Thanks indeed, convener, and again, thanks to Audrey for the introduction, another very, very positive report. And again, congratulations to all at the school for that achievement. And in a way, you touched on it, Audrey. I've said before, I always take with a pinch of salt recommendations that talk about continuing, because that's not really a recommendation. That's just really recognising the good work that's actually going on in the school concerned. I do have one question and it's around the point that was made by the inspectors about ensuring that activities planned by teachers are well matched to the learning intentions identified. And I was just really wondering if Karen, who I know is along today, could maybe just talk around that and what the school has done to tackle that particular area that was highlighted in the inspection.
Yes, yes, I can comment on that. As a school, we've been working on high impact teaching strategies, which are research-based approaches. Obviously, we're a big school and I have a big team who vary in terms of levels of experience. I've got some staff who are very confident at that aspect of the learning and teaching process and others who are earlier in their career and are just developing that kind of methodology. What came across very strongly during our inspection was that the visitors had seen pockets of exceptionally good practice and were encouraging us. And in that same vein, continue to make sure that our really strong practitioners are supporting those that are less experienced in that area. So we'll continue to do that work as they've asked us to do.
That's very helpful and grateful for the feedback, Karen. Thank you.
I noticed councillor Anderson.
Thank you, Bailey Keenan. This is a genuine question. I don't know how frequently schools are inspected. So I just wonder, you know, if there's a set period of time that they're inspected and how, you know, when, how this report compares with the last time the school was inspected. You may not have that information with you, Mrs May, but it's just the frequency and how likely it will be for them to come back.
Not of me, yes, sorry. Thank you for the question, councillor Anderson. But yeah, you're right, we don't have that necessarily in front of us, but we can get that information for you. But it's not an exact cycle, you know, there's all sorts of algorithms and randomness in the approach to inspection. And, you know, some of our schools in the city have not been inspected for many years, you know, as many as ten, eleven, twelve and others. It's, you know, it's six years, seven years, eight years. So we don't have an exact science around that, but we can get you more information about certainly the last time that this particular school was inspected and how that compares. If that would be helpful to yourself and to committee, we could share that information out with the committee.
Mrs May, I don't necessarily need to have a copy of that report. I'm sure your team will be working on it. And I suppose it's taking reassurance from there are no more visits planned in respect of this school. So it's in a good position.
Yeah, no more visits, absolutely correct. Yes, thank you.
Can I maybe ask a question in relation to them suggesting that you get the parents more involved in the working of the school? And I know that, you know, parents are the most forthcoming getting involved in schools. Some might have never liked the place while they were there themselves. And, you know, so how do you propose to do that? Or how do you propose to take that kind of feedback that perhaps is available on other schools of similar nature to make sure we're hitting the right mark as far as HMIE is concerned? Is that a difficult question?
No, 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 not at all. I was just giving that question for me, yeah, okay. Yeah, I suppose Downfield is in a fortunate position that we do have a lot of parental interest, a lot of parental buy-in in the work of the school. And so we're in the process of reworking some of our parent council at the moment and including parents who are really interested in the educational provision within the school and involving them and making sure their voices are on the table within that. A lot of the events that we have, we call them sharing the learning events, and these tend to be the most popular events to include parents. We're often queued down towards the shops at the end of holiday when we open up the doors for things like that. So there's certainly no shortage of interest, which is certainly a positive thing. And what the inspectors asked us particularly to do was include parents in the work that we're doing in terms of our review of the curriculum. It's been a wee while since we've reviewed the curriculum and we'd already started that work. That had begun before the inspectors had come in and they commended us on the work that we'd done so far and encouraged us to complete that and include parents. So I suppose that'll be the next invite for our parent bodies to come in and help us with that work.
Okay, sounds like you've got a cover. I seem to remember it being a fun day on a Saturday down there that was organised by the parents and the place was mopped. So I can understand that some were deeply involved at that time, but kids move on, don't they? So.
They do, they do.
There doesn't appear to be any other questions to be asked of yourself. So I'd obviously like to thank you for the work that you do on our behalf as well. And you could take that back to the rest of your staff as well at the school. Thanks. Okay, Willie, if that's agreed, we'll move on. Okay, looking like it's agreed.
Thanks very much, convener. Item four, the HMI inspection of St Inians Primary School and Nursery Class. And the head teacher Lisa Mcfield is also present this afternoon.
You want to head again, Mrs May?
Okay, so another very positive report for the committee. School St Inians with a nursery class was inspected back in March twenty-four. And as you can see, a very, very positive reflection of the school with evaluations. So again, another full inspection. So all four QIs looked at across the school and the nursery with evaluations coming out as four very goods and four goods. So again, some very important key strengths here. We're always delighted when we see the leadership of the school being highlighted as a strength. High quality learning and teaching mixed with really good progress and very positive relationships. Everything that you're looking for, including the children having that opportunity to take on leadership as well. So good to see that nod to UNCRC as children's rights are being developed in the school and looking wider and further afield as they not just improve their own lives, but the lives for their children too. Really, really reassuring for us in the service that transition arrangements are very strong. We know that big step that children take from P seven into S one. And often we see that reflected positively in the secondary reflections in inspections. But to see it in the primary as well is really, really important. So all really important key strengths for the school. And of course, as I say, it's always some, apart from early years, it seems. But in our schools, there's always some areas for continued improvement. And once again, we see that continue to develop phrase being used. And also just that nod to the fact that there was some discrepancy between the school and the early years evaluations. So just that bit about working a bit more closely in terms of the leadership in the school with the nursery colleagues. But I know there's been some change of personnel there and that's possibly one of the reasons why that just needs to be strengthened. So all in all, a really, really positive report. Thank you, convener.
Cheers. It is a very positive report. I'll look for Bailey McPherson to come in with a question.
Thanks, convener, and again, thanks, Audrey. And, you know, I do hope Lisa will take away from this the appreciation of all of us for what is another, you know, the good news just keeps on coming today, really, doesn't it? In terms of the quality, both at St Inians Primary School and the nursery class as well. The only question I had was in relation to the point about the senior leadership team working more closely with leaders in the nursery. And I'm just really wondering how that's been approached and is that, you know, has that comment from the inspectors been tackled?
Hi there. Hopefully you can hear me. Thank you very much for that question. Yes, we're absolutely delighted and I'm very, very proud of my whole community and absolutely will take back your thanks to everyone. In terms of the nursery, over the last few years, there have been quite a lot of changes for us. Obviously, with the introduction of the eleven forty hours in 2021, I think it was, which has been a fantastic opportunity for our young people. That has brought a bigger team, that has brought wraparound care, that has brought lunches and facilitating that kind of thing. And we've also had some change of personnels. We had a very experienced senior who decided she wanted to move into residential care and we had an acting senior. So where we stand is it absolutely aligned with our self-evaluation, what the inspectors were saying to us. And what we've tried to do is ensure that we have spoken to staff about what actually would be beneficial in terms of challenge and in terms of support to make sure that we are actually targeting what is important for our setting, because obviously our setting's very different from other settings. So things like our monthly meetings with our senior have moved to fortnightly meetings with our senior and we've taken our nursery teacher into those meetings as well. We've made sure that moving forward, the nursery improvement plan is more strongly aligned with the school improvement plan in key areas, particularly around health and wellbeing and our rights respecting school approaches. Things like our nursery teacher accessing early level training and our senior now has the role permanently. And we are very, very similarly aligned in terms of outcomes for young people. So, and I suppose the biggest thing as well is looking at the professional development and the moderation being planned termally. So currently, prior to this inspection, we were doing that yearly and looking at a yearly overview. Actually, what we felt is important is to do that termally so that we can be much more responsive and making sure that we meet the needs of our setting. But I'm incredibly confident in my senior, I'm very confident in our early years team and very proud of the journey so far. And I really feel we're well on our way to those very goods aligning with the school, very goods.
Could I just say, convener, very many thanks to Lisa for what was a very detailed piece of feedback there and very reassuring indeed. So very grateful to you, Lisa, for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe a last question, if we're going to frame it properly. No necessarily, but the report, it's just I've spoke to a few parents, surprised at how many parents from the school that are actually follow the fact that we've got a cracking HMIE report. And, you know, somebody saw that, I've had a few questions asked of me in relation to it. I believe the school may next year be moving to two primary one intakes. Would that be the case? No?
Hi there. No, absolutely not the case for primary one, no.
No, that's.
Not sure what that is.
Well, I'm not sure what that was, but you seem to be thinking that it was composite classes coming in. That was a wee bit of concern for people, but, you know, I thought if there was two primary ones coming in, that, you know, the school's probably booked for four forty, so that wouldn't be the question anyway, so.
We do have a composite class that's been created this year, as schools across the whole city do in terms of looking at, you know, how we move forward our classes and making the best fit for children. So that's potentially maybe what someone's been meaning by that in terms of we haven't had a composite class for a few years and we will have in August.
Yeah. And is there a greater intake in P one or is that not the case at all?
So in the last few years, we certainly have had bigger intakes in our early years. So we are bringing in bigger numbers than we're putting out at the other end. It's definitely a growing school. So when I started as head thirteen years ago, we had a hundred and thirty pupils and we're now sitting at two sixty. So, yes, we are growing and we're loving it.
Very good, very good. Okay, I've nothing really more to ask on the report. Obviously, it's a cracking report. Congratulations to yourself and the rest of your team. Keep up the good work on our behalf. And as most important is that we deliver it to children.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Cheers. Okay, if that report's agreed, then we'll move on to the next report, Willie.
Okay, thanks, convener. Tish, on item five, fire rescue quarterly performance report. And Eric Commander Hinton and Paul Robertson are on the call.
Yeah, and over to one of you guys, Andy, to take us through it.
Thanks very much, convener. Obviously, a hugely positive report with most things moving in the right direction. I think it's important to highlight the leadership that Paul provides in the local area and the way he manages the teams to produce those results. So without further ado, I'll hand over to Paul and he can dig into the detail and we'll take any questions you have after.
Go then, Paul.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks, Derek. So what I'll do, if it's okay, Chair, is I'll just touch on the performance summary and the performance highlights on page two oh four and two oh five of the meeting pack. So priority one is improving fire safety in the home. As Derek's already touched on, it's a really positive picture. Probably as a result of all the good work that the community action team and the operational crews are doing in that really targeted approach with partners and that really detailed partnership working for the highest at risk. The all areas in that section are down on the three-year average. And most of the incidents that we are attending, we find are low impact, low damage with very limited firefighting action required. And priority two is improving fire safety and resilience in the business community. So incidents actually rose slightly in quarter four, but they are down on the three-year average. Sadly, we had one fatality earlier in the year and at the last update, and a report had been sent to the procurator fiscal and that will be subject to a decision on whether or not we'll go ahead with a case conference. So there'll be more information to come on that potentially. There was also one non-fatal casualty at Nine Wheels Hospital. It was limited action for our crews. It was a bit of misbehaviour by a patient in a ward. And crews did attend and they assisted, but the personnel within the hospital had pretty much dealt with the incident by the time we arrived. And priority three, reducing unwanted harm, so RTC, road traffic collision activity. Year-to-date incidents are down on the three-year average, down quite significantly. Again, sadly, there was one fatality earlier in the year, incident on Riverside Drive. We did attend that incident, but we were really there to assist ambulance services. The individual had already been removed from the car. Non-fatal casualties are down significantly, so that's good news on the three-year trend. Nine compared to twenty and twenty-one in previous years, so that's significant. Extracations that were required were generally precautionary and any removals to hospital were again generally precautionary. So that again indicates low-speed impacts and there are no trends identified in locations either. Unwanted fire alarm signals, as expected, with the policy coming in earlier this year, continue to reduce. But we've had discussions with colleagues in legislative fire safety because the table that I've included on what will be page two, one, three of the meeting pack shows that we still have repeat offenders and we really want to focus on that and bring that educational piece to those establishments. The full details, as I say, are there and mostly centres around the West End. So it has quite a biased effect on Blackness Fire Station and the activity. It still has a lot of disruption at this end of the town. Priority five, which is deliberate primary and secondary fires, have reduced since the last quarter. I didn't attend quarter three scrutiny, but one of my colleagues passed on one of the questions that was a response asked to come back. a response asked to come back for this scrutiny. A breakdown shows that there's been quite a significant increase in vehicle fires. And that's actually offsetting a reduction in the other types of, so building fires or other types of property. So yeah, around about the 50% mark of the numbers for the year are attributed to vehicle fires. There's been a really significant reduction in secondary fires. And for the first time in three years, I'm happy to report that we're amber, but we're within 10% of the target. I think there's six incidents in it, which is not a lot of incidents given the total number for the target. So that's really positive. And again, I would attribute that work to the Community Action Team and the operational crews that continue to liaise with partners and go out to schools and educate and do that diversionary work. Priority six, so the details of the training and the preparedness work are within the report. I'll not go through those, but they're detailed on page 216 of the meeting pack. And if it's okay, Chair, I'm happy to take questions on that or any of the performance management or the appendix sections.
Okay, thanks for that. Bailey McPherson, you in for a question on this one? I've kind of lost the plot in the chat for who's hosted, who's not.
I think councillor, sorry, Bailey Roberts has indicated the question. I will, but you've saved me typing. So I was going to come in, but I noticed that Christina had already asked the question. So I was just waiting until that had passed.
Okay, then we'll go Bailey Roberts.
Thank you. Paul, you mentioned that there's a growing number of car fires again. Is there a core area that these fires are happening? And has anybody found out why there's such a big hike in numbers? Because we're looking at an annual target of below 63. And, you know, 143 incidents to date is quite a lot.
Yeah, thanks, Christina. Regarding the first part of the question, I haven't drilled into that detail, but from going through the reporting system, they seem to be predominantly in the north of the city for the car fires, but not exclusively. With regards to the investigation part, I would have to hand over to my colleagues in Police Scotland, because we don't investigate the why. We put down the incident commanders at incidents will determine a probable cause. And so these have clearly been put down as most likely deliberate. But that further investigation work falls to my colleagues in Police Scotland. You're right, it's not just this quarter. It is growing. And I think the trend across Scotland is the same. So, yeah, it's something that we could do, we're getting a handle on. But we're within the fire service, we're quite limited as to what we can do.
Christina, I might be asked if there's anyone from Police Scotland be able to make a comment on that, just while the item's fresh. Colin?
Yeah, thanks, Convenant. Yeah, I would echo Paul's comments there. We are seeing an emerging trend of vehicle fires with no link between them. So, you know, to put that in context, you would maybe look at youth causing fires and willful fire raising and link that to them. So there has been a trend over recent weeks, which has emerged. However, we've investigated a number, and I think off the top of my head, and I don't exactly have the figures on my head, but I can count about eight in the last month that in particular have occurred in Dundee and various areas around Dundee. Two of them have already been detected, and they involve disputes around various drugs backgrounds and various targeted attacks. And two people have been arrested and are to be reported for two separate incidents, one in the West End area of Dundee and one up, I believe, up in the Charleston area of Dundee. So they're isolated incidents, and the victims are known to them, and the cars are known to them and they're targeted. And that is a trend. There have been a number of others which have been investigated, and we have no further lines of inquiry. And that might be down to sporadic, spontaneous attacks, whether involving youths or other persons. But the trend is that there seems to be, if there's a dispute, the easiest attack is that of the vehicle, which is outside, part of the home address, or known to the person. And it's certainly something we're seeing across Scotland.
Yeah. Back to yourself then, Christina. If you have any further questions to please sort via.
No, it's just thanking Kevin Phillips and his team for some of the youth diversionary stuff. It's been really interesting being involved in it.
Good. So then on yourself then, Bailey McPherson.
I think Adam was going to make a contribution from the police perspective as well. I think he's got his hand up.
Adam?
Listen, fast to being out, it was just to say that on relation to the fire side of it, we'll take that way. Have a look at that from multi-agency lens and see what the trends are, and take that forward.
Thank you.
Okay, will I go now? Okay, thanks, Convenant. Just in relation to the fire report, and, you know, I think an awful lot of positive information in that. So very grateful. Thanks to Derek and Paul for that. I had a specific question about the information on page 215 regarding deliberate fires and Dundee cat being proactive and working with other agencies to reduce the number of these. And I noticed that there had been, for example, a school talk at Fintry Primary School, which I think is a really good thing to do to engage with young people. Now, I'm pretty conscious that if we include all the primaries and nursery, sorry, primaries and secondaries in Dundee, you're talking about the best part of 50 schools. So, you know, I'm not suggesting that you go on a roadshow around all 50 schools or thereabouts in Dundee. But are there any plans to roll this up to a number of more schools? Because I think that's, you know, a really good thing to do. And if the local policing teams could cooperate with that as well, I think that would be really appreciated.
Thanks, Fraser. Yes, safer Dundee is noted within the report. I think the event that you're talking about was, I don't want to say reactive, but I think there'd been a bit of secondary fire activity in that area. And as you know, the CAT team monitor our incident activity log on a 24 hour basis. They check it every day. And they will go out and target areas to try and stop any spikes in activity. But the ambition is actually, you know, to do exactly what you've just said. We would love to be able to get out. The crews and the CAT team do find it sometimes difficult to arrange and get agreement from schools, because the schools are clearly very busy with their curriculum. I would like to sit down and plan out how we could do that and get around all the schools in a calendar year. Because I think, as you say, Fraser, it would be a really useful piece of work. I think that's where we need to start is with education. Hopefully that answers your question.
It does indeed, Paul, and grateful for that proactive approach that you're taking. Thank you.
Paul, you had the head of service nodding their head there. I think you're on a winner.
Thank you.
Can I be asked about what the fire brigade are doing in relation to, or their understanding of what's in industrial units, given that, you know, we've got this fire in Grenfell that's been on a few days, you know, the pollutant is someone else. And we've had Faraday Street a fire a few years ago, the one at Friar and Bridge, you know, and just the level of health issues that potentially go along with that, indeed to the fire crew and, you know, the wider population. Do they have an understanding of what people store in units that, you know, what you'd be heading into if you did head into one of these fires?
Yeah, thanks, Bailey Keenan. That's a really good question. So yes, the operational intelligence part within the section priority six, firefighters are out all the time, you know, gathering that type of information on what's in industrial premises and such like. I actually attended an incident up in Perth, it must be about three or four weeks ago, at the council recycling centre. And it was exactly the type, the same kinds of materials as you saw the Glasgow fire, only smaller quantities. We have adopted and adapted our techniques. We probably would have, when myself and Derek were out stomping the ground and scooting water and stuff, we would not have bothered about PPE, such as face masks and stuff like that. But we do now make it mandatory for firefighters working in areas like that to either have full respiratory protection on, or indeed adequate face masks, so that they're not getting that. And decontamination, as I'm sure everybody's aware, is a big topic in the fire service just now. So, yeah, we gather the information as best we can, so that we understand the risks. And when we do respond, when we need to respond, we are looking after ourselves as best we can. So hopefully that answers your question.
Thanks very much for that. I don't see any further questions. Is this report agreed? Okay, then we'll move on, will you?
Okay, thanks. Take you on to item six, Dundee Local Policing Area Quarterly Police Report. The superintendent, Adam Smith, and Chief Inspector Coln Echevarria, you're present on the call.
Convenant, I'll start from the police side. Just as an introduction, I'm Adam Smith. I'm the partnership superintendent. I joined the division earlier in the year. So a few people know me, but most people don't. So nice to meet you all. Chief Superintendent Nicola Russell is obviously now the new commander, having done my role in a previous life. She can't make it today, so she just wanted to submit her apologies and say she was keen to be here, but was pulled away to another matter. I'll pass on to Colin in just a minute to get some highlights from the report. But I just wanted to give some broader perspective on corporate things that have been going on with Police Scotland. We've had a very busy few months operationally, and that's reflected in the report. But other things that have been going on is things, including the changes in legislation, the new hate crime legislation was brought in April. So that wasn't without its challenges, but that's all settled down now as well. I suppose the other thing I wanted to highlight is National Response Policing Week this week, which is a celebration of our frontline 999 workers. So it's the people that are attending blue lights when people are in crisis. So it's just to highlight that. And there's lots of stuff on our social medias that people might like to look at. And that kind of segues into the main development in Police Scotland, as the chief constable has recently agreed the contract around body worn video. So that will be coming to Police Scotland in the next months to year. That's going to make a huge difference for us. I think the use of body worn video, you know, we aim to increase public confidence, there'll be transparency about what's happened at incidents. It's going to speed up the criminal justice system where evidence will be agreed early on. A lot of police time is spent and involved in that. And I think the last thing, just going back to those response officers, assaults against all emergency services is not to be accepted. And we're of a firm belief that once we have body worn, that will limit the number of attacks on our officers. So I'll leave it there and I'll pass on to Colin, who's going to give an overview of the highlights.
Thanks, super. Yeah, so if I can just refer to page 227 of the pack. And what I'll do is I'll take us through the performance on a page and touch on the figures in a bit more detail there, and then take questions afterwards if required. So going into the performance of page on the last quarter, then the overall group four crimes you'll see are down last year, down on the current year to date by minus 4.2%. And actually, from the five year average, that's minus 10.2%. So that includes our fire raising. We've touched on the aspect of maybe we're the trend and increase of vehicle fires, and we can bring that back at the next scrutiny. But vandalism, reckless conducts, crimes like malicious mischief are all down, and the trend is going in that. So that's a lot to do with our prevention, our visibility, our communication, and the things we're doing in local communities with our community teams. You know, you will see there that are ASBO incidents, and that's the ASBO incidents that are recorded. Again, they are down year to date at minus 4.5%. And from the five year average, it's minus 20.7%. So that is a clear highlight that the community officers in that area working with and predominantly find that the youth activity around ASBO is quite high. And they are normally, you know, the demographic that's committing this type of crime, the work that we're doing around there, the youth diversion work with the street soccer in the city centre, which again, we can touch on and we'll touch on in the next scrutiny, that is working and driving down antisocial behaviour and vandalisms. And the evidence is clearly on the page there. Then moving on to a robbery figure. So you'll see that there's a slight increase, 1.9% in our robberies year to date. And that is that in the last quarter, 32 robberies were recorded. Seventeen of these crimes have been detected with persons reported for it. However, there's 14 currently under investigation. There are suspects identified in those 14, and there are lines of inquiry. Our CID teams will investigate the majority of our robberies, and they'll sit with them until they exhaust all lines of inquiry. So whilst the robbery numbers are up by three, there's likely that we'll have some positive outcomes out of that. And still the trend continues that our robberies in the city are mostly committed by people that know their victims, and their victims know the perpetrators. And a great deal of them are unfortunately linked to drugs and the harm and the vulnerabilities brought around by that. So it's still a clear example in the city that, you know, people are suffering. And, you know, unfortunately, they're in a position where they'll commit a robbery to fund a habit or, you know, or help themselves. But we are focused on that. And again, that's down to prevention's work around drugs and harm, the work that we're doing with the third sector and our partners on there. Moving on to serious assault, you'll see it's minus 11 year to date, so serious assaults are down. And again, that's highlighted. And common assault, they are down as well. So again, positive figures. That is undoubtedly a lot of the work that we're doing around licensed premises, because you'll find whilst there are assaults and a series of assaults can occur in the home and the public space, that there's a lot on licensed premises. And that's again involved to drink and drugs harm. But the work we do around the night time economy, the messaging around in the certain campaigns, like, you know, the One Punch campaign that we had a number of years ago, that's obviously proving effective. And again, it's reducing these reported crimes. Moving on to overall group two crimes, then you'll see that rates current year to date up to 116 reported rates. And we are plus 6.4% from last year to date. And again, the similar trend, I'll just touch on domestic abuse, 121 reported recorded crimes current year to date. And that's up 34.4%. I'm not concerned about that. That is, you know, for want of a better word, good news, because that gives us confidence that people are reporting these crimes. You know, these heinous, horrendous crimes are being reported. They have confidence in the police to investigate them. And, you know, they feel safe to come forward and report that. What I would say is about the domestic abuse, you know, figures there, 34% increase. But that just echoes in from the Domestic Abuse Scotland Act, which was brought in in 2019, where we have a DASSA offence, which is section one, domestic abuse Scotland offence, which encompasses all offences committed within a relationship under a single offence. So whereas before, prior to that, we would only deal with, you know, assaults, you know, the threatening abusive behaviour, we now have the powers and the laws to deal with abusive relationships and the perpetrators that are responsible for that. So, and again, it echoes to the fact that people, victims are coming forward, that, you know, they feel the support, whether it's from us or, you know, our partners, and they're reporting those crimes, and they've got confidence in us to investigate. And that is really reflected in the detection rate of the current year to date. We're sitting at 76.9%, which again, is up from the last year to date. So whilst there's more volume, our own response officers, you know, uniformed officers and our domestic abuse teams are throwing resources and, you know, great investigations into that. And the outcomes are that the perpetrators have been brought to court and dealt with that. So some real positives in there whilst the volume is up. Moving on to road safety, then speeding offences, 167 have been recorded in the current year to date, and that's up to 96.5%. So a lot of those speeding offences are detected via our roads policing department and our safety camera partnership. So that is evidence that in the roads of Dundee, people are still speeding, they're still breaking the law in the 30s and the 40s that we'll have here. However, that gives us confidence that our roads policing officers are deploying, and our camera vans are deploying in the right areas, you know, using the information in terms of have about offences and the dangers on the roads, they're deploying in there. And as you'll see, you know, there's a massive increase in there, but that's but that's purely just because of the volume of work that's coming out of those departments. And then drink driving, drink and drug driving is down, which again, it's positive. It's only one less recorded crime however than the last year to date. So, you know, evidence that drink driving is still going on. However, we are actively pursuing that, whether proactively or reactively from reports and people and perpetrators are still being brought to justice. On that note, the Police Scotland Summer Drink Drive Campaign starts on the first of July and that'll run from the first of July to the 14th of July. So for next scrutiny, we'll bring back the reports for that, but that might see an increase due to that extra proactive work and there'll be a lot go out in the media over the next week or so to advertise that and deter individuals and act as a preventative measure. And then I'll move on lastly to acquisitive crime. As you'll see, house breakings come year to date, recorded crimes at 357 and that's down by minus 17. So again, you know, horrible and absolute disgusting crime. There's a trend of the, you know, of the downward there. However, our detection rates sit at 34.7%. So they could be improved, but a lot of that has to do with our capacity at the moment and the ability to investigate once a crime happens and also the difficulty investigating house breakings once they're committed because the perpetrator isn't there any longer. It then relies on forensics and there's a lag in forensic investigation and results. So that figure might improve and certainly house breakings will sit within offers work baskets for a, you know, for a period of time until they exhaust all lines of inquiry. So whilst that detection rate sits at 34.7, that is likely to prove over the coming weeks and months. Then on to motor vehicle crime. So it's a national, national trend. We have recorded 894 in the current year to date and that's up by 5.2%. So again, across Scotland, like many things, that is a current trend. It's increasing across Scotland and it's really down to, you know, a number of aspects. Firstly, keyless car theft is still an issue. We've done a lot of prevention work around keyless car theft. And there's a lot going out in the media about educating members of the public about locking the keys away, you know, and protected boxes, keeping them away from doors and that. So we push that message, however, unfortunately it still happens. And it's normally linked to house breakings as well and high value motor cars. And you'll find that the groups that are targeting keyless car thefts will be through, you know, organised crime groups out with Dundee. Now whilst there are groups in Dundee committing car theft, there are groups from Edinburgh and as far south as England who will commit these crimes and will target various cities, towns in Scotland and carry out these crimes. So again, upward trend. Moving on to our frauds, our frauds are down by minus 0.43, 686. So again, a downward trend, a lot of that is down to the preventions and the media and the education we do around online fraud, you know, sex extortion and similar fraudulent crimes, which, you know, are committed normally by people out with the UK. And again, organised crime groups, you know, from the Far East and other areas of the world. But there's a, you know, promising downward trend, which means the education message is getting through and the members of public are listening and becoming more aware to these types of crime, which is about that awareness and just educating people. And then lastly, before I take a breath and pass on to questions, it's shoplifting. So shoplifting is up by 31.6%. Recorded crimes year to date, 200, 2184. It's a national trend. We are not an outlier in the country. That is very, very similar. Dundee does sit quite high though in the number of shopliftings that we are seeing. In particular, as we'd expect Dundee City Centre and the West End, Charleston area. And there's a couple of stores that get hit quite, you know, quite highly in that area as well as up in Long Horse Section. But it points to probably a number of reasons. What are the reasons for people shoplifting? What's the harm behind that? You know, why are they, what's the vulnerabilities? They are vulnerable people, whether it be through a cost of living crisis or drug or alcohol abuse, that they feel they have to commit shoplifting to fund, you know, living or, you know, or a drug habit. So it still points to there's a lot of vulnerability still in the city as well as across Scotland. And the shoplifters are increasing. So we're doing a lot of work with retailers, asking the retailers really to take a game as well. And they are, there's a number of shops in Dundee that we're liaising with closely. They look at preventative measures, the way they can set out stores to prevent shoplifting, security, you know, loss prevention officers and on a regular basis, on a weekly basis, where we're liaising with our shops, retailers in Dundee and working closely with people like the city centre management and the partners down in the city centre to improve the police presence, the reporting of shopliftings, the means that can report shopliftings and then obviously our investigation, which a lot of the time, you know, is difficult because of lack of CCTV and all of our premises or because the people are committing it, you know, concealing identities etc. And there are a number of repeat offenders in Dundee who persistently target certain shops, which increases the figures. But it's about then going after those perpetrators, those priorities and those persistent offenders in any way means and helping to reduce that. But yet clearly, as I say, it's a national trend on the increase. And then over the next quarter, we'll look to target some of those retailers and do some education around that. So that is the performance on a page, you know, a lot of good messaging there, you know, against the backdrop of resourcing at the moment and the challenges we have with, you know, call demand. I'd say Dundee are doing a very, very good job for the size of the city it is. And over the next sort of three to four months then into the next quarter, we'll push some of these and put some focus on certain areas like antisocial behaviour, drugs abuse and in the shoplifting. And by the next scrutiny, we'll hopefully have lots more positive messages. But I'll pause for questions and then there's a lot of detail in the report that I'm sure people have digested already.
Thanks very much for that, Colin. Billy McPherson.
Thanks indeed, Convenor, and thanks to Adam and Colin for a, you know, very comprehensive overview of the report. My comment, and there's a question on the back of it, is around the whole area of retail crime, which Colin was alluding to there and the information on pages 238 and 239. I've already thanked the police for the efforts that have gone in in my own local area. It refers on page 239 to the Lochie Beach area and the two worst affected shops. Actually, the Lochie Beach area obviously includes both the West End Ward and the Lochie Ward. And the two shops referred to that have been worst affected are both sit within the West End Ward. And what I would say is there's been really good communication with local elected members from local officers about what they're doing. I've also got a lot of engagement with the manager of one of these stores. And I'm impressed with the amount of resource and commitment the police have shown in terms of trying to tackle the issues at these two particular supermarkets. I suppose my question on the back of it is, and obviously you'll always have a resource issue, you know, as the weeks go by. And obviously you may, you know, have similar issues at other stores across the city. But I was just really wondering what the success has been in terms of these particular supermarkets in terms of ensuring that the issues tackled long term and that we'd actually see a reduction in the amount of shoplifting and attempted shoplifting in these stores and others across the city.
Yeah, so I think I understand the question in that, just to confirm, how's from McPherson, that so you're asking that the work that we've carried out up to the day continues?
It's partly, does it continue and are you seeing as a result of it, less attempts at shoplifting basically? As a result of the efforts that have been put in?
Yeah, yeah. So for instance, well, you'll know that there's two, one of the premises in Dundee in the West End was targeted by one or two individuals. And when we look at, you know, it's daily, you know, and we had the same in the Long Horse Section, you know, a large supermarket, let's say, in the Long Horse Ward up there. Again, it was down to one individual, however, he was going in multiple times, one or two times a day over the week. So what we have seen is that it's about, yeah, identifying the person, arresting them and then looking for bail conditions, you know, to prevent them from going back there. However, you know, if they are bailed or if they're a persistent offender, it's a remand to, you know, to prison to prevent that, you know, that persistent offending. So we have seen in the individuals that have recently been arrested for the shop in the West End and the one in the Long Horse Section, that one particularly has been remanded as a result of multiple incidents, one whereby he pulled a knife on an off duty police officer who challenged during the incident and assisted staff. So I suppose, yes, it's about that. It's also about, you know, our warrants. We have outstanding court warrants in Dundee and it sits at a very, very high level. But when we review them on a weekly basis and we now have a sergeant who reviews these outstanding warrants to, you know, to see where we can make those quick wins and identify people, for instance, who commit violence or the warrants might be outstanding for shoplifting. Now, if you have a warrant outstanding for shoplifting, it's likely you're going to continue to offend and you're going to continue to commit shoplifting. So as part of looking at the whole bigger shoplifting picture, it's about identifying who is wanted on warrant for shoplifting offences and arresting them as the quickest way possible. And again, that's just acts as a way of prevention. So it is about that communication piece. It's about working with the retailers. It's about educating them because some of them won't, you know, it's challenging because they obviously on the backdrop of the cost of living and increase of, you know, the increase of electricity and, you know, utilities and that, they won't spend the money on security and crime prevention. They won't upgrade their CCTV systems because it costs thousands of pounds. So when they look at loss prevention, they'll take the loss over the investment and prevent security. However, what that does is then it makes it a harder job for us because the, you know, they accept the loss of a bottle of whisky, you know, or meat or whatever's taken, but they'll still report it to us because they'll have to, you know, they'll have to adjust that loss and claim an abjurance. But we're left having to investigate it. And there's a clear reason why people are shoplifting and it is their vulnerabilities and it's for us all to work together. So, you know, I think retailers could be do something more, especially the bigger retailers. However, we will work alongside them and hopefully decrease these numbers.
Yeah, that's, that's very helpful. I have to say, obviously both the retailers and the particular instance in my ward are frankly big nationals and one would hope that they would invest in, you know, up to date CCTV and so on. I can understand the financial challenge for small independents, but for, for large, you know, companies that you'll find right around the UK, I think certainly sending the message that they should be investing in, you know, up to date CCTV and so on is a, is a good one to be sending. But I'm very grateful to the efforts of Police Scotland and also grateful to Colin for his very fulsome reply. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Rowan. Oh, sorry, Adam, you look to make a comment.
Just to add a bit further to that, that we're looking nationally at ways of retailers reporting retail crime online, which would mean we already have desk here where people can upload CCTV directly. But if we're looking at direct line reporting, it just makes it really straightforward. It's really efficient and it means the officers that are coordinating and reviewing the high tariff offenders, it gives us quick wins. So as Colin outlines, it's, we've got high tariff offenders that have very complex needs. So another part of this is making sure the referral pathways are there around alcohol, drugs, mental health and poverty. So that's another thing that we're acutely aware of as well.
Okay, thanks for that. Councillor Rowan.
Thanks, Convenor. And so two very big questions if I may. One is about the non fatal overload and naloxone administration. I just want to maybe just get a bit more detail about that in terms of the training of officers, whether this is continual training and new officers are starting with that training. Because it just seems in terms of the situation we know we have in the city with drugs misuse, that that two figures seems a little bit low compared to other areas potentially. So I'm just wondering in terms of the consistency of training and how that works. And just to say for my second question, we haven't met Chief Inspector. I'm quite looking forward to our meeting in person following the letter correspondence that we had. And just going back to your point about body cameras as well, it's obviously, I'm sure, extremely welcome by the force. It gives you that reassurance in terms of interactions and potential future prosecutions and hopefully discourages any kind of escalation of events that you attend in terms of violence. But I presume that will also be a boon in terms of resource if you're attending, helping with cooperation, for example.
So I'll just touch on the body worn first if I may. So as it stands, we're still working through the operating procedures around it all, but it won't replace corroboration, I think, is the, is the point that I would put across. We'll still, the resourcing model will still be the same. However, it's undisputable corroboration of the, of the event. So the resourcing side of it is things will likely not get to court because the evidence will be agreed in advance. So, you know, no decisions will be made about operating models at the minute, if that, if that answers your question.
It partially does. Thank you. I'm less thinking about things that might proceed to court, more thinking about the actions of PCNs, for example, that's sort of low level things that you might attend, that that might be useful because I know that obviously, as I touched on in your answer to Billy McPherson, there's, we all appreciate your significant resource concerns. So just, just about that. And then as I say, the question about naloxone.
So as far as that goes, my belief at the minute is that it will still be two officer corroboration, but it's not been worked through yet. So that, that's just my opinion on it. So once we get full confirmation of that, we'll come back to the committee around that. So you have an understanding of what that looks like. In relation to naloxone, Colin, do you want to comment on that?
Yes, councillor. So naloxone is still carried by every uniformed frontline officer and CID officers within Dundee City. All our officers are trained and new officers coming in are trained to that standard. And they carry two doses of naloxone in a pouch, which is carried high visibility in their vests. And, you know, it's clearly labelled naloxone. The two, I know it's, it's two incidents and what happens is just to give you an idea behind that recording is that we are called to an incident when the officer has to deploy naloxone and administer that. It's recorded on our store command and control incident and then we collect the figures every day. So it is, that should definitely be accurate. I suppose it's a good news and that, you know, we are being called to incidents whereby naloxone isn't required so that, you know, the overdose or the risk of overdose would appear to be reducing. But there's also the fact that we may attend the same time as ambulance service, who will then go down the line of administering naloxone through, you know, intravenously. So that's not accurately recorded by us and it might be that naloxone still be administered by, as I say, the ambulance service and a third party, you know, and family members as well that can carry it. But yeah, for the police aspect, yeah, those two, so that certainly has dropped off since naloxone was first introduced over a year ago now or even longer. So we are seeing a drop off of officers using it, but it's still carried by every officer.
If I can just come back in again, Convenor, just that's, that's really helpful. Thank you very much. I wasn't out as a criticism, just trying to understand how that compares. Obviously, Police Scotland is Police Scotland. So just trying to understand the consistency of approach to other levels because other cities indeed, because I would have expected higher figures. And as you say, it's potentially a good news story.
Yeah, uh huh, yeah. And ACC Gary Ritchie, who led in the naloxone, you know, project was really passionate about it and so was our chief constable and it's the same across, right across Scotland. Every uniformed officer carries it and they're now trained from that, you know, that initial probationary period when they start with us. So we are lower, you know, that's Scotland's largest city and there are only two. I don't know the figures broken down into, you know, the bigger cities like Glasgow and Edinburgh, but we're obviously carrying it, you know, we're obviously administering naloxone less than those. I don't know, but I can bring that back and I'll bring it back. I'll look at the breakdown nationally and bring it back for the next scrutiny. But yeah, it's hopefully a positive message and that we're having to use it less.
And can I just add as a comment, so obviously I've, I've come to this division at the start of the year and I've been really impressed by the overall partnership approach to dealing with drugs. It's a really advanced stage. I won't say where I've come from, but you know, the, it's very advanced stage. It's a really advanced stage. I won't say where I've come from, but you know, the, the, it's a very advanced stage and it's at the forefront of daily business. And obviously I have the overview of partnerships and prevention and it is ingrained in all our daily business around that. And I, I'm pretty confident that officers will use it at the opportu- any opportunity. We monitor the drugs, drugs trends as well and we're aware as developments happen that the dosages of naloxone may have to be increased. So these are things that we're aware of and we monitor daily.
Thank you.
Counselor Cadell.
Thank you, Chair. It's just to return, if I may, to the, the retail crime, the shoplifting that we've been discussing. In particular, the incidents at Sainsbury's at Tom Johnson Road. You refer to working with partner agencies there to ensure youths were identified and then visited. But in other areas of the city, we're suggesting it's vulnerabilities that are causing the shoplifting incidents. You know, vulnerable adults, vulnerable needs that are maybe even more involved. So is it, is the Sainsbury's incidents very specific and of a different nature than we are seeing in other parts of the city and, and, and so they're being dealt with differently?
Yeah. No, sorry, Counselor. I maybe haven't been that clear or it's maybe been misheard, but I wasn't referring to youths at Sainsbury's and Tom Johnson Road. So the instance in Tom Johnson Road was a particular male, an adult male who was persistently targeting that shop along with the other retailers across at Millstone Craigie Retail Park. And he was targeted on two occasions where a, a police operation has been arrested and has now been remanded in custody. And as he's the gentleman who was responsible for presenting a rifle off duty officer. But there have been youth issues up in, in Sainsbury's and Tom Johnson, aware of, but no. And in regards to vulnerabilities, yes, he, he was particularly vulnerable due to, you know, his economical background and, and his, his use of drugs.
Okay. If I may come in, sorry, Chair, just looking at the wording, it's maybe the wording in the report then, Colin. It says, long haul community policing team have been working closely with their local Sainsbury's store after a significant increase in thefts and antisocial behaviour. So they're two different.
Yes, yes.
The thefts are the three people referenced thereon. The antisocial behaviour is youth.
The antisocial behaviour has been the youth. Large groups of youth running into KFC and, and Sainsbury's and causing havoc. And, and, and really the staff really concerned about that. So no, there was a target operation with a number of youths identified there and they were taken home or identified and visited in front of their parents or guardians and warned about that. So yeah, shoplifting and the ASQ issue up at the shop are, are, are separate. And the shoplifting issue is one particular individual, if not others. But from the individuals that have been identified, there are clear vulnerabilities and risk in, in their background.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I maybe ask a question? A few months back, you, you ran a sort of special operation in Brophy Ferry. I think you took out sort of dogs that can sniff out drugs and the like on an evening and it was a fairly successful evening. And I asked at that time whether there was plans to mirror that in other areas across the city, given that, you know, a lot of bars will have people going into traps two by two to, to share a bottle of drugs. And whether there, at the prevention point of view, there's any possibility of that happening in other areas of the city that would sort of send a strong message that, you know, we should be stepping away from drugs.
Yeah, yeah. Me, that, that, there's not to say we couldn't do it. However, that, that, you know, there's probably a number of factors in there that, and any drugs, any drugs operation and particularly using, you know, passive drug search dogs, it has to be intelligence-led. And there has to be justification then for, for, you know, sending officers to the area, detaining people under Section 23 of Mr. Drugs Act, you know, because, you know, it's an invasion of their privacy. It's, it involves intrusive searches and we can't just blanket target licensed premises just, you know. However, I agree that, you know, that there is evidence of drug use in our licensed premises and our, our night time economy officers in, in Dundee Centre Safe and Ferry Safe, who do the patrols on a Friday night, see drug abuse and, and we recover drugs and stop the search. But what I would say is that door staff are very proactive. So for instance, we get a lot of calls at the weekend now with door staff detaining persons within toilets in premises for the purposes of search. They will call us in, they will detain them, they will search them and we make recoveries of drugs, which are normally the, the drug that's used in licensed premises, cocaine. And, and we see that trend continuing. So, so in, in a way, there is information. A lot of it's to do with resources. It's also the availability of drug search dogs. And without going further into it, but they are a national resource, you know, so that, that they're not on, they're not on call. They are here and available, but we have to be careful how to use them, when they can be used and, and have the demand elsewhere. There's also the guidance around how long you can use them. But if, if it's something one of the councillors would like in their ward, then we can discuss it and we can look to do something over the summer. We have done it before at nightclubs in Dundee City Centre. So something we can look at and I'll take away with the city centre team in particular. And in the Perth Road area, I see Counselor McPherson nodding his head. I'll look into it and we'll come back next scrutiny.
No, I think, I think that would be useful. I probably should highlight that someone mentioned to me the other day that they've seen drugs being dealt openly in the High Street in Lochie. And that was somebody that works in a shop and they seem to think it's going on on a fairly regular basis. So perhaps somebody could look into that. I'll, I'll send you an email later with the, with the shop that the person works in.
Absolutely. And Sergeant Stuart Payton and the team at the Lochie Community Officers, I'll get them to look at that. But yeah, send me the email and we will look into that.
Okay. But I have no further questions. So is this report agreed? Okay. Well, let's move on again. Thanks, gentlemen.
Okay. Thanks very much. Take you on to item seven, internal audit reports. And Cathy Wiley, Chief Internal Auditor, is here to speak to that item.
Yeah, Cathy, you go for it.
Thank you, Convenor. So the first report we've got from internal audit today is the one with the update on the reports that have been finalised since the last meeting. And at four point two, sorry, excuse me, you can see that there are five reports coming today. Three with substantial assurance and two with limited assurance. And we have one of these reports is in the old style of report. This is the last report that will come to you in the old style. From now on, they'll all be in the new style. So the first one that we're looking at is the one that's in the old style. And this is the report on the adaptations and equipment for people with disabilities. And the scope for this review was to look at arrangements in place within the Dundee Health and Social Care Partnership and the neighbourhood services for the assessment and provision of adaptations and equipment for people with disabilities. As I said, this is one of the ones that has a limited assurance conclusion. There were some satisfactory elements of control present and however, there were weaknesses in the systems. The main areas where we have recommendations and agreed actions are designed around addressing client safety, reputational and compliance risk. And these main areas around making sure that the electronic client records are consistently accessible to all staff within the integrated teams, regardless of the pathway by which a particular client accesses the service. Looking at opportunities to collate better management information to be able to provide assurance around monitoring timescales for the completion of client visits and assessments and the recording of the outcomes of case note audits. There's also some opportunity for some improvements around automating some of the reports that could be provided. Looking at simplifying the funding arrangements to make them accessible via a single process. And also considering whether some of the assistance that's currently categorised as adaptations could be provided as equipment. And we've also gotten a recommendation there around further guidance being sought from the corporate procurement team to make sure that processes are compliant with procurement legislation and council policies. Some of these things I know are already in course. Obviously, this is a piece of work, given that it's in the old style that has taken a while to get the report finalised. So a number of these actions are already underway. The next report that we're bringing.
Cathy, I'll just hold you there because there's a couple of questions on the first report. So I'll pass over to Billy McPherson to start with.
Thanks very much for that, Cathy. My question's really around, and it's perhaps more for the, less for audit and more for the service provider, if you like. And it's really around what you had to say about electronic client records being consistently accessible to all staff and presumably easily available to all. And the recommendation that community independent living service staff should be using Mosaic as their main system of recording information. I was just really wondering if that has been actioned and because quite clearly we don't want a situation where records are not held in a consistent manner.
Let's look, Dave Berry.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Convenor. In terms of the, the kind of, the records that are held at the moment, this, this is kind of something that we've, in the Health and Social Care Partnership, have struggled with for, for some time in terms of having integrated kind of systems between both the, the kind of local authority and the health system. Sometimes the, they need to kind of use a particular system driven by the profession. So probably more comes from an NHS perspective, that kind of different professions are required to kind of use a particular system. So we have got, you know, Mosaic as our kind of key, kind of core client record system that we use within the council. And the number of teams are starting to kind of expand that to kind of use, for our health colleagues to be able to use that. So that we will continue to kind of try and make sure that all, all kind of staff where we can will use those integrated, integrated systems. And but it's something that we've, we've still got probably a bit of work to, to, to do on that, Bailey McPherson, given the, given the kind of challenges that we've got around system access across council and NHS staff.
I appreciate, in a way, Health and Social Care Partnership have a unique challenge, given obviously staff coming from the local authority or, or the NHS setting. Do you have, two, two brief follow-ups? Do you have a sort of time scale in which you think you'll be in a better place with regard to that sort of, you know, common approach, shall we say, to the, the provision of information? Also, and I only ask this because I bluntly, I covered a, a group colleague's surgery a couple of weeks ago. And with regard to a particular disabled adaptation, a lady I was speaking to has been waiting a very long time for an adaptation. And I was wondering, is there a significant backlog?
Okay, thanks, Bailey McPherson. So in terms of the, the first question, we have got that down as a, as an urgent action for the, the kind of extended management team in the Health and Social Care Partnership to, to take forward. Don't have a kind of particular time scale for that in terms of, I can't commit to something now because again, some of it is out with our control in terms of access to systems. But it's just going to give you the assurance it is kind of high up on our agenda. Because it makes, it makes more sense for us, for our efficiencies to have integrated kind of system. So it's something that is really important to us to try and develop. In terms of the kind of waiting list for an adaptation, I would have to kind of go back and just double check where we are with that. It's not something that I'm aware of as a, as a significant issue. I think there will be kind of a number of cases where that will, will be the case, depending on some of the complexities. But I, I can take that away and just kind of double check that there's, there's not a particular showing feedback to, to commit.
That's very helpful and I appreciate feedback in, in due course. Counselor Coleman and I have actually raised this particular issue with your colleagues in the Health and Social Care Partnership. But for information, Dave, I'll, I'll forward you the correspondence. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Bailey Keenan. Three questions, but one is really following on from Bailey McPherson about the waiting list for adaptations. And perhaps when you bring back that information about the length of the waiting list, it would be good to have some analysis of where the blocks in the system are. Because I know I've certainly written lots of emails to try and support people to get adaptations to showers and, and the properties. My, my two questions were about the budget. It's 1.368 million, which is a considerable budget. And I just wondered if we spend all of that or underspend it. And it ties into the waiting list about whether there's much more man, demand than we're meeting at the moment. So is that budget spent quickly? Is it spent before the year end? And then my third question was about the comment on limited assurance. And it says here at the second bullet point that, you know, we should include monitoring timescales for the completion of client visits and assessments. And I just wanted to check what happens now. Like, are we, are we introducing a better system for monitoring or are we not monitoring at the moment?
Can you answer that, Dave? If you're on mute, Dave.
Thank you. Sorry, I can only pick up part of the, the answer on the budget because the, the budget kind of sits with, kind of across neighbourhood services. And the only one that sits within the Health and Social Care Partnership is the 168,000 for community occupational therapy. And yeah, that, that money is always under pressure each year. And so, you know, I think in most years we actually overspend in that because, because of the demand. The kind of provision of community occupational therapy is so crucial to our kind of pathways that it's something that we, we want to kind of continue to invest at that, that level. And I don't know if my kind of neighbourhood service colleagues have any information on the other elements of the, the budget. And I'll come back on the, the other question.
Yeah. Tony, it looks like you're looking to come in.
Thank you, Bailey Keenan. Yeah, we don't have a specific response to that that we can provide at this moment. If you allow us to go away and get the answer to that, we'd be happy to provide it to Council on this.
Okay, thanks. Heather, have you a further question?
Yeah, it was just the, the comment on the, the monitoring, on the time scales and whether, you know, what we do at the moment.
Dave?
Yes. So I think the, the issue around that is about consistency across the service in terms of having that consistently recorded effectively. And the, kind of from the, the management perspective and the response that we've made. And again, there is that commitment to, to kind of work with the, the kind of across the teams to ensure that we'll have that consistent information available.
So just to come back there, it might be useful to just amend that slightly to say, you know, increasing or increasing consistency in monitoring time scales. Because the way it's written, it's, it's as if we don't monitor them at all. And I don't think that's what you're saying, Dave. Thank you.
Hey, see whether Cathy's looking to amend the report now anyway, if that's what you're asking for, Heather.
We can do, although we wouldn't normally amend a report at this stage because it wouldn't be issued again. I think the detailed report probably has more information around, around the, why that was raised as an, an action. And it's also possible, because there's been a bit of time since the audit was undertaken, that what's currently happening won't necessarily be the same as what was happening at the time of the audit. But I'm happy to go away and look at that and we could reissue that if we needed to.
Yeah, you, you probably don't have to reissue the report. It's just make it, I mean, my question was about, were we monitoring? And I think Mr. Berry said that we were monitoring and this is about actually increasing the consistency of the monitoring, not commencing monitoring. So it was just that clarification from the way the report was worded.
I, I think it's also around where the monitoring's been reported as well. But I would need to go back to the detail of the, the full report to check that.
So even if you could send me an email, that would be fine.
Yeah, I can do that.
Greg, are you looking to make a comment?
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. And I appreciate Counselor Anderson's comments there. At this point, I don't believe it would be appropriate for officers to amend any report that comes to scrutiny. But recognising the point that's made by Cathy, we can follow up and clarify the point and email to all scrutiny members. Thanks, Convenor.
Okay. Thanks for that. There's no further questions on that. So well, is this report agreed? We could move on to the next one. Back to yourself then, Cathy.
Okay, thank you. The next report is the one on procurement and, sorry, hold on till I get my cursor in the right place. So the scope of this was to look at compliance with tender arrangements, including the review of the arrangements for tender waivers. And the overall conclusion on this was. And the overall conclusion on this was substantial assurance. Procurement practices in use within the council were generally consistent with good practice and statutory guidance. However, there were no consistent arrangements to ensure that delivery of contracts and relationships with suppliers are managed once the contracts have been awarded. We did identify a number of areas of good practice and inevitably there are a number of agreed actions as well to address the issues that were identified. You'll see in the table that's on, I think it's page 259, that three of the objectives that we looked at were comprehensive and substantial. And the first one, which was around the management of the tender process and contract management, excuse me, was limited assurance. In terms of that limited assurance, we did generally find that the management of the tender process was, was fine. The issue really was around having consistency around contract management processes and making sure that people understood what needed to be done there and perhaps having a bit more guidance around that. So that, that was the procurement. Do you want to ask any questions around that one before I go on to the next one?
Can I, can I ask someone? I, I take it that the measures we'll put in place will have some level of measure of the performance moving forward once the contract's placed, given that someone may well sit on, sit on our approvals list as a contractor, but their service delivery is pretty much rubbish. If we didn't monitor what they should do once we've placed an order or meet our expectations.
Yes, and that, that's what this recommendation about is making sure that we've got consistent processes to make sure that that is being monitored and managed across all of our contracts. In a proportionate way, obviously, you're not going to do the same amount of monitoring on a smaller contract as you would on a larger one.
Yeah, just, you know, would have, would potentially have contractors in, in the wrong place that, you know, we shouldn't reconsider in some cases. Greg, looking to come in?
It's actually myself, convenor. So it's just to confirm in respect of this audit arrangement, we are looking at the guidance and be very clear in terms of contract management arrangements, where the responsibility sits for various parts. So it's through the matters you raise will be, will be considered as part of that review.
Yeah, thanks for that, Paul. Any further questions? No, report, report agreed. Right, back to yourself again, Cathy.
Okay, thank you. The next one is the Service Design and Business Improvement Audit. And this was looking at the, the processes for the development and implementation of the sixth phase of the council's transformation plan as a component of the council plan for 2022-27, and including consideration of levers identified from the previous phase of the programme. Again, this was substantial assurance. We concluded that the council's governance arrangements and processes to oversee transformation activity were well designed. However, there were only a limited number of projects that had been implemented through the processes since the current arrangements were introduced. And we did identify a lack of clarity over the projects that fall within the scope of the transformation programme. And also identified that there's not yet a robust approach to defining and measuring the realisation of the project benefits. And we did make a number of recommendations that were addressing these issues in terms of. Sorry, just get to the right bit of my page here. Yeah, we made recommendations about the clarity of objectives of the transformation programme and the ability of the council to demonstrate that the progress of the programme delivery is sufficient for them to be achieved. We did ask for a, a plan to be put in place just so that we could monitor this more closely and have a, a better timeframe for knowing when things are progressing as we would want them to. And we did have some recommendations around, around the benefit realisation and the, the management's assessment of internal controls against the risks in the risk register. Do you note that some of the controls to support delivery of the transformation are not fully effective, particularly approaches to benefit realisation and the programme monitoring? So that was consistent with the findings of this audit.
Yeah, doesn't look to be any questions for you on this report then Cathy. So if that's agreed, we'll move on to the next report.
Okay, the next one is the Community Justice Liaison with the COPFS and the courts. And this was looking at the processes by which community justice services liaise with the Crown Office Procurator Fiscal Service and the Court Service, where supervision of individuals is required, including statutory orders, community payback orders and supervision following release from custody. The overall conclusion here was substantial assurance. The services, the services designed and implemented generally robust processes to ensure appropriate action is taken in a timely manner in relation to individuals referred to the service. And we've made some recommendations aimed at strengthening the processes designed to provide additional assurance over the quality of casework and to enhance reporting. And again, there was a number of good practice items identified here. But happy to answer any queries.
Doesn't look to be any questions on that report. So is this report agreed? Thank you for that. Then Cathy, we're getting on for yourself again.
And final report that we're bringing today is on the financial sustainability in terms of leisure and culture Dundee. And the scope for this audit was to look at the arrangements for the continued financial sustainability of leisure and culture Dundee following the COVID-19 pandemic. This piece of work has been on, on the go for a bit of time. You'll see that we've got a limited assurance for this audit. At the time of the initial audit work, there were some significant weaknesses that we'd identified in terms of the systems of control. And there has been work in the meantime, since the initial audit work was undertaken, to move some of these forward. I suppose the, the other issue for us getting this report finalized was the fact that we had some items were for the council and some were for LACD themselves. So that's taken a bit of time to, to make sure that we've got everything meshed together. But the, the key areas that are identified here really are the fact that the, the service agreement by which the council articulates what it wants LACD to deliver is quite an old agreement. And that is currently being reviewed. That's been on the go for the last few months and that needs to be finalized. And as part of that process, the, the arrangements for monitoring, the, the performance need to be agreed and also the arrangements for how the management fee is agreed also need to be updated. So that's all included in the, the service agreement. There's also some work being undertaken, looking at the service level agreements in the opposite direction in terms of the, the services that are provided to LACD by the council's support services, just to make sure that these are properly reflecting what's being provided and that these are fit for purpose. Once all of that has been agreed, there's further work then required in LACD to make sure that there are service operational plans which sit within their more strategic arrangements, which will also cover what's in the service agreement. And just to make sure that they're gathering the information for that performance management. We also identified that on the back of all of that, there would be scope for improving the financial management that was being, information that was being presented to the LACD board. I think it's also important to note that as a result of some of the work that was undertaken in terms of the 2024-25 budget setting, obviously, there's been some work around all of this. And it, and it is recognised that unless there is substantial change, realising recurring savings, more income or a change to the services provided, additional financial support from the council may continue to be required in future for LACD. But I'm happy, I don't want to go into any more of the detail on this, but happy to answer any questions.
Suppose for me, it's, there's, there's no really a question. Obviously, it's the first of reports that we've seen where leisure and culture are sort of painted in a, a, a picture of sort of financial difficulty in some way. And, you know, I think that the report, this report, perhaps we, some other attachments should go to the full council, given that the full council have given their support over the years for the, the sort of COVID money to be going in its direction. And we've continued to, you know, try to ensure that services are maintained and, and places remain open. And yet we've seen a, a consultation on potential closure of facilities. So my, my recommendation to this audit group would be, you know, ask whatever questions on this particular item that you'd want to clear your own mind with Cathy or officers. But I would like to see the thing be reverted back to council. City Governance Committee perhaps, so as the, the wider council have got an understanding of the financial position. And it would be probably useful if leisure and culture were to also put in a bit of a wish list of, if you were supporting us by this amount of money, you know, what, what could we deliver? Or what can we return, what can we turn around in the organisation? So no just the one sided, you know, here's how bad it is. It's about what could you invest to make the thing better? So. I'm looking for other comments then. So Bailey McPherson.
Okay, tha- thanks, convenor. I know the chief executive was coming in, but I'll just very briefly say, I actually agree with you. I think there would be a lot of merit in, in this report and perhaps some additional information coming before City Governance Committee. There is no doubt, there's a significant challenge for leisure and culture Dundee in relation to financial sustainability. That's not news to any of us. And therefore I think the wider body, rather than just the eight members of the scrutiny committee, I think it would be useful for them to get sight of this internal audit report for a start. I've, I've, I've a couple of questions specifically for today though. In relation to the, the weaknesses in systems of control, the executive summary alludes to going some way to address these. And I'm just really wondering the extent of that and what, you know, what, what else needs to be done to ensure that they're, that as best leisure and culture Dundee can, they ensure that they are managing areas of what have been previously potentially areas of unmanaged risk. And also in relation to the service level agreement or service agreement, whatever it's called, in, in terms of timeframe, when is that likely to be concluded? Because I think it's a very valid point to say, current one's quite old, real need to update it, particularly given the challenges facing leisure and culture Dundee and that sector as a whole, frankly, post-COVID.
I think there's probably officers who would want to comment in that. I think from an audit perspective, my view would be that the, the main, the main things to happen are to get that service agreement finalized and agreed and to get a, a regime within that that agrees what the performance monitoring information will be, both in terms of what LACD itself would be monitoring and what the council would want to see, the council officers would want to see for monitoring and, and taking that forward. And then from LACD's perspective, moving that into their operational plans in terms of how they're going to deliver what the service agreement says that they need to deliver for the council. Because they need to look at that within not just what they're delivering for the council, but if they have other things that they are doing out with that actual agreement. Because there are some other agreements in place and they may do other work because they are a separate organisation. So they need to make sure that that's all meshed together and that they can see how it's all fitting in terms of where the finances are coming from for the different activities that they're undertaking.
Chief Executive, you looking to make a comment?
Thanks, convenor. It, it was just more in relation to, to your point, and I think Bailey McPherson covered it regarding the wider circulation of the report. So happy to speak to Roger just about the procedural aspect of that. I think Bailey McPherson touched on it, that officers have been reporting through revenue monitoring about the financial position of leisure and culture Dundee with regards to the COVID Support Fund that has been provided and the extension to that up to June 2024. So just to acknowledge, I'm, I'm happy to pick up on that point and for officers to, once Mr Many has confirmed the procedural aspect on how we do it, to draft that report that outlines the financial position for leisure and culture Dundee, albeit recognising there may be things that leisure and culture Dundee as a board and as an ardent-led organisation may also want to consider. So hopefully that's helpful, convenor.
I, I, I think it would be so if that's going to happen and I'm quite happy. Bailey McPherson, you're looking to follow up?
Yeah, happy with that, the, the thing's not been touched on. I was asking when the SLA is likely, or our service agreement, I think Cathy referred to us, when the review of that's likely to be finalized.
Andrea?
Yeah, we've set a, a deadline for the end of November this year to have that completed and agreed with leisure and culture.
Okay, thank you.
Cheers. Okay, is this report agreed with, with this direction of travel? Okay, I think we're moving on to the next report then. Willie?
Thanks, convenor. Item eight then, before his internal audit plan updating progress report. And again, Cathy Way will be speaking to this item.
Well, well done to you, Cathy. Can you then sound like you're in the mood to speak in the day too?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I've, 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 I've not been well and it's gone into my throat and I'm struggling to speak about it here. So this is my internal audit plan and progress report, which is the progress of the internal audit plan, progress with the implementation of the agreed internal recommendations. And also just to get your approval to remove one of the items that is currently in the plan. At 4.3, on the first page of this report, you can see I'm wanting to remove the audit on monitoring contractors from the review, from the plan. We've already covered a significant amount of the scope from that audit in the procurement audit that we've just discussed. And there's also a further audit in the 2425 plan, looking at housing planned and reactive maintenance, which will also cover some of this. And it just seems like we would be duplicating work and not finding out anything we don't already know. So it doesn't seem like we should spend the time on that audit. Other than that, the, the tables that start on page 279 show you where we are with all of the, the work. All of the 2122 internal audit programme that was carried forward in June last year is now delivered in terms of the 2223 items that were carried forward. It's either delivered or we have, sorry, let me just double check my numbers here. We've got four reports which are out in draft, which unfortunately didn't make it to this committee, but they'll be done in time for the next committee. And we have two other pieces of 2223 work that are in the planning or plan stages that we're about to start. In terms of the 2324 plan, we have one report that's out in draft. The majority of items are currently work in progress and we've got three items that are still in planning stages. So we've moved things on significantly, I think, from the last time that we reported to you. And I would certainly hope that we'll have a significant number of these projects finished and able to bring to reporting to the next committee.
Yeah, Bailey McPherson, looking to make a comment?
Yeah, I was just really to say, I have no problem with your suggestion in 4.3 about the, the dropping of the monitoring, the contractors, I think we all understand the potential for duplication. My, my, my comment is just a positive one to see, you can see that there is progress. And obviously, the fact that you've got new staffing resource, plus obviously you've got the audit support contractor as well, is quite clearly making a positive difference. So that is very pleasing to see, Cathy.
Yeah, thank you. That has made a big difference.
Like Bailey McPherson, I have no issue with the, the report being dropped as well. I think duplication's just a waste of effort. Doesn't appear to be any other questions. Is this report agreed? We'll hurry up the next report for you then Cathy, I'll even skip Willie this day.
Thank you. So the next one is my annual report, which is my annual opinion and also some other information that I'm required by the public sector internal audit standards to provide to you. So just on, sorry, I'll get there in a minute here. On page 294 at the top there, 5.1 is the opinion, which is that reasonable assurance can be placed upon the adequacy and effectiveness of the council's framework of governance, risk management and control for the year to 31st March 2024. Now, I, I obviously had a bit less work from the audit programme this year than I would normally have, but I don't just take my assurances from that. I look at all the other information that's available from other inspection agencies. We've seen some very good other reports from other inspection agencies. We've seen some very good other reports from other inspection agencies today already in the committee. And I'm also looking at the work that's come from external audit, including the best value reviews, which have also been very good. So that all feeds into my overall assessments. And I'm also taking into consideration the work that I'm undertaking on a on a day to day basis with officers across the the council in in a number of of areas. There are a number of things that the rec, the Public Sector Internal Audit Standards require me to tell you. The first one is that we are actually, we do comply with the the standards except for one area where we are required every five years to have an external review. The external review has begun, but the reviewer has postponed the review because of their own resource issues and therefore the review isn't finalised yet. So we've now gone beyond the five years, but there is, there is no sanction as such for going beyond the five years. But I am required just to let you know that that is the position that we're in. I would hope that once we've got all the year end reporting out of the way, that they'll be able to restart the review and we'll get that finished. I'm really hopeful that we'll get it to the next committee. Um, but yeah, I'm at their mercy really in terms of them finalising that. Um, so the other things just to say are that there were no limitations. The scope placed on the audit work by management during twenty three, twenty four. The staff members involved in each of the audits were independent of the area that was under review. And although, as I say, the external quality review hasn't been undertaken, my own self assessment is that we are generally conforming with the public sector internal audit standards. We do have an improvement programme which is in place, which rolls on each year. The key, it's in the appendix here, but the the main areas for us going forward this year are, I would like to to do some more work using SharePoint to be able to make the process for agreeing briefs and getting draft reports agreed and run more smoothly within within services, just to make that a little bit more effective and efficient. And also, as we've spoken about before, there will be new public sector internal audit standards coming out this year, which we'll need to review our processes and make sure that we still conform with them. And I know there will be some changes that we need to make. And once these are out, they will need to be in place for the first of April twenty twenty five. So we've got a wee bit of time, but we don't know when we're going to see them yet. So it might, it might be later in the summer before we actually get the definitive statement in terms of what might need to change. Um, the other things that I need to talk to you about are just the resources within the team, as we've already alluded to. We've now got a fully staffed team. And we do also have the contract with assets in place so that we can have um, supplementary work from them if it's needed. But I'm I'm comfortable that we've now got staff that will allow us to deliver what we need to do in the in the coming year. As you can see from the information that we've got in in the report, most of the reports that we've provided this year have been either substantial. We've got one comprehensive assurance, but we'd have three areas where there was limited assurance. Two of those we've already spoken about today, and obviously these action plans, although there is action being progressed, these actions have only just recently been finally agreed. So some of them are still in, in being finalised. The general ledger was the other area with limited assurance. Two of the actions that have reached their due date have already been implemented. The other ones are on, are on track. Um, and we are, you know, I'm not particularly concerned in terms of the progress that's being made with delivering those actions. And last year, there were also three audits that fell into that category. Um, but at this stage now, there are only a couple of low priority actions that haven't been implemented from them. So that's good progress in terms of making sure that these risks that have been identified are being mitigated. And in terms of the the actions that are outstanding, we do have slightly more actions this year that are forty four outstanding as opposed to forty one last year. However, the oldest actions now are 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 younger, if you know what I mean. Last year, the oldest actions were from two thousand and fourteen, fifteen. But now the majority of the actions that we have outstanding stem from twenty twenty, twenty one onwards. And we don't have anything that goes back further than two thousand and sixteen, seventeen. So we are making progress with that. And that was discussed further again this morning at the Risk and Assurance Board. And we are working closely with services to try and get that number down further before we report the next time to you. I think that is everything that I wanted to draw to your attention from this report. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Yeah, tha- thanks for that. It's quite comprehensive. So doesn't appear to be any questions. This report agreed. Thanks again then, Cathy.
Thank you.
I think we're ready to move on, which is probably yourself again, I think.
No, I think it's some deals now.
Okay, Willie, you take care again then, Willie.
Okay, thanks very much, Convenor. Item ten then, before his annual governance statement. This is a report by Executive Director of Corporate Services, Robert Emmett.
Thank you, Convenor. So this is an important report that sets out the governance of the organisation. It's very comprehensive and it will form part of the submission along with the annual accounts for audit. And you'll notice that Appendix One, there are actions carried forward from last year and an update in those. And Appendix Two, new actions of improvement that will be taken forward into the next year. Happy to take any questions yourself or members may have, Convenor.
There's appear to be any questions, so we'll move on then, Willie, if that report's agreed.
Yeah, thanks, Convenor. Item eleven is audited annual accounts. Again, it's a report by Robert Emmett.
So thank you, thank you, Convenor. This is, this is seeking approval for the submission of the draft accounts for audit for the year. We appreciate, obviously, the time is tight on these, so you possibly haven't had a huge amount of time to scrutinise them. But we will be arranging a seminar for members to have a detailed presentation from Paul and Francois, who've done the majority of the work on this, for members in due course. Obviously, they sat at the position at the year end and myself or colleagues here will be happy to take any questions that you might have on them.
Can I maybe just ask one question? Because you're you're right, we don't have a great deal of time. And obviously, look at these and think it's the first stage of us seeing them, being them being unaudited. And we'll see them audited and the like in a, in a final audit probably. The 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 level of absence continues to grow. And I'm just wondering, you know, has that got a relationship to the waiting lists that exist within NHS? Perhaps, you know, some of our staff waiting on an ear replacement or or whatever that that that's causing us some difficulty where, you know, that individual might have been back to work much earlier and they find themselves off a long time because, you know, the NHS is starting to let people down a fair bit.
Well, thank you, Convenor. That, this is, this is a topic which is very much in the minds of the leadership team and we were discussing it just yesterday. The most significant reason for absence, absence continues to be stressed, though that is falling as a share of it. I don't know if there's any correlation between access to treatment and and we can have a look at that and share any information we've got back with with the committee, but just to assure members that that's something we're very much focused on and we'll be continuing to monitor with the aim of trying to bring absence back down.
Convenor, if I can also just come in and say that the council's recently taken a decision, the leadership team, to invest in employee support officers to support managers in some of the more specific areas where we're seeing absence trends. We're also looking at further support that we can provide colleagues. So it's a, it's a matter that we're acutely aware of and are also looking to take immediate action. If I can also, Convenor, just introduce Lindsay McInnes, the council's new head of people, who joined us last week, and Lindsay may be on your screen at the moment, as I can see, she just came on the call. And I'm sure Lindsay would be happy to update you at further meetings on the work that her team are leading on regarding the attendance policy and how we promote attendance within the workplace. Thanks, Convenor.
Yeah, well, nice to meet you, Lyn- Lindsay. We'll no doubt hear from you at some stage.
Yep, thank you.
Any questions on this report as it stands? Billy McPherson.
Thanks, Convenor. Could I maybe just take the opportunity to thank officers, Robert, Paul, Francois and all their colleagues? It's a very substantial bit of work and I know the timescales are challenging. And I, I, and whilst obviously we got this at the, at quite short notice, the briefing is always helpful and it gives us a chance to digest the annual accounts before that briefing. So that's very helpful. If I could make a rather trite but very minor point, you've got to update the photographs in it. The one of councillor Alexander, I think, is from the twenty twelve, after the twenty twelve election, never mind twenty seventeen or twenty twenty two. But other than that, rather trite point, can I make a ask a question? And I don't really want to put Lindsay on the spot. Welcome, Lindsay, by the way. And I don't really want to put her on the spot, but maybe if officers who have been a little bit longer in the tooth in terms of their employment with Dundee City Council could maybe just reflect on, the information on page eleven does have a recurring theme, other than children's and families, where there's been additional staffing costs in relation to teaching. Um, but every other area seems to have um, uh, staff costs being less than anticipated due to unfilled posts. And I'm just really wondering if perhaps maybe the chief executive could give an indication of, we're making any progress on recruitment? I'm aware of the challenges in particular areas that have been in recruiting, but I was just really wondering if there's any update on, you know, success towards filling unfilled posts?
Thanks. So thanks, Bailey McPherson. So we are seeing more interest for posts that we are advertising. And I'm not aware that there are any particular areas of concern. We've obviously implemented a number of actions around looking at modern apprentices and looking at pathways. So for posts that we're going out to recruit, we are seeing the market responding well to those. I guess my only caveat to that would be that members will be aware that when we report the revenue monitoring report, if we are in a position of overspend, which we were last year, and there was notes in the report around the C L T, looking at how we reduce expenditure. So in some cases, for certain posts, we may defer recruitment for those for a short period of time. But I can confirm, normal processes have commenced and have been ongoing since April.
Right, I'm grateful for that, Greg, and in particular, it's good to know that they're, you know, that they're obviously at challenging time in terms of actually being able to recruit into certain areas. But if that's more, if you like, going back to the pre-Covid situation and with genuine demand, that's, that's obviously to be welcome. So grateful for the response. Thank you.
As as he's, no, no, no further questions. Just that when you mentioned these photographs, I went and had a look at them and I could see that Robert Emmett is the only one that's aged. I'm suggesting that Robert works harder than Abdi else. Anyway, we'll just move on to the next report. Willie. We lost Abdi.
Sorry, I lost the, the mic there. Apologies. Item twelve then, is committee self-assessment and annual report. This is a report by Cathy Wayley.
Go for it again then, Cathy.
Okay, thank you. And this is a new report that you won't, you won't have seen before. It's a, a report from you as a committee to the, well, we're suggesting it goes to the City Governance Committee. And it's, it's been done as a result of the guidance from SIPF in terms of good practice for audit committees and that they should have a report which summarises the work that they've undertaken during the year, how they've, how they've achieved their, their terms of reference and what the outcomes have been from the audits and other work that's been undertaken by the committee. And there's also a bit of information about the operation of the committee. For the first time this year, as you know, we've undertaken a self-assessment with committee members using SIPF's checklist and the results of that are included within this report. And you'll see that we do have some areas that are scoring lower than you would probably like them to score. And therefore, we will be considering this as officers over the next couple of months just to see what training we might be able to put in place. Some of the areas that scored lower this time round will be addressed. This report in itself addresses some of the areas that we previously didn't do that that were in the the good practice. And the self-assessment is another area that hasn't been undertaken before. But there are also a few small changes to the terms of reference, which will be coming through shortly as well, which will also help to address what the good practice is suggesting for the committee's operation. And so that scoring, I think, next time round would be higher. But as I say, we will put together an action plan to address some of the areas which are scoring more uh, towards the bottom end of the range, just to make sure that we can improve those for the future.
Yeah. Is there any comments for Cathy or questions? I I I just thought Cathy, some of the things where we've scored low was potentially that we just didn't do it, made it up to the sort of way the question was put to us. You know, may well be that we've got scrutiny in that area, but you know, the the answer had to clearly be no. So perhaps it's a case of looking at differently how we do things. If if that's what we need to do for the sake of making up and ticking out these boxes, but to get a number in them rather than a nae knowledge. Is this report agreed? No, sorry, Heather, you're looking to make a comment?
No, I was just saying, sorry, I didn't know that we hadn't submitted this report. We used to do this report in, I was a councillor on Scottish Borders. And referring to the point you're talking to, Bailey Keenan, we started like that too. We ended up with quite low scores, but over the years, we were able to see the incremental increases. So it's probably just because it's the first time we've done it that the assessment's lower because you're not quite sure of what you're judging against, you know, something else, but.
Thanks for that. Okay, is this report agreed? Right, move on, Willie.
Thanks, Convenor. The remaining item, item thirteen is annual report and complaints. This is a report by Greg Hogan, Chief Executive.
Convenor, if I could just maybe just do a quick update and then take any questions, if that's okay. And so this is the latest annual report and complaints and gives the statistics for twenty three, twenty four. And you will note that the report fully complies with the requirement set out by the Scottish Public Service Ambusman. And we try and use this information to improve how we handle complaints, but also services. The report shows an increase in complaints recorded in twenty three, twenty four compared to last year and also a decrease in our performance and terms percentage of complaints dealt with within their target times. The issue around that, the target times and and length has been discussed in detail with the council leadership team just recently. And the exec directors have been asked to reinforce the importance of responding to complaints promptly and to high standard. And we'll continue to monitor that. We have seen a slight improvement in performance since the end of twenty three, twenty four, and we'll look to try and make sure that's a sustained improvement. And we obviously reinforce that message through training. So we're keeping up the training that we're doing with officers. There has been a bit of a turnover of officers that deal with complaints. And the information relating to complaints to the Public Service Ambusman for last year are not available yet. They are usually released in August, sorry, autumn. And we'll include that in the mid-year report for twenty four, twenty five, which would come to scrutiny later in twenty twenty four. And the report also gives you some information about the huge number of transactions and interactions the council has. So you can see that complaints are a very small proportion of that. So for some context, put in the compliments that we receive as well. And I'm happy to take any questions or ask for support from any officers as appropriate.
Billy McPherson.
Thanks, Convenor. I apologize if you hear any noise in the background, carpet fitters. So apologies about that. And yeah, I was, it was just really around the dip in performance. I was wondering, Andrea, you alluded to the fact that, you know, officers through, you know, the this senior leadership team, officers have been reminded about the need to be prompt in responses. But I was just really wondering what's actually prompted the dip in performance? Because it's obvious to me that the, like, the volume of them has increased. So that in itself is a, you know, a more of a challenge. But also, I was just really wondering, is the complexity of them maybe a factor as well? I was just really wondering what you think is the overall driver in the dip in performance? Although it's good, as you indicated, that there's been some improvement in the monthly figures since the turn of the year.
And so the volume has, I think, has a slight impact, but not significantly because for the services where the volume's gone up the most, their performance hasn't increased dramatically. So they are sitting around that kind of average. And the areas that are seeing the Um, the areas that are seeing the highest number of days are around the most complex areas. So it is around children's services and health and social care. And that's been reflected in, in some of our previous statistics. So they are becoming a bit more complex and they do take a bit more time. And obviously for, um, education, one, sometimes the fact that there's a school holiday, if you've got to meet with parents and things like that, that can also add to that. But they do try and turn them over. We've had some detailed discussions with, um, children and family services. So they've put in a number of improvements and monitoring within there. So we're hoping just to keep a close eye on that and try and, um, support. There's also ways that they can, um, I suppose, improve the communication, just keeping people up to date. If a complaint is taking a bit longer and potentially extend it or escalate it to stage two if they need a bit longer. So we've been working through some of that as well.
That's very helpful Andrea. Thank you.
This is me. Were you looking to make a comment?
No.
No apologies, convener. I, I just come on screen to let you know I was still here if there was anything to follow up on that, that commentary from Andrea, but I hit the wrong bit of my screen. I put my hand up. So apologies.
No problem. Okay, is this report agreed? Okay, that's the end of the marathon scrutiny committee. Thanks for your attendance and your contribution.
Thank you.
Bye bye.